Discussions that have been taking place on the last two Saturdays. Today, we meet to complete our discussion of the formal direction that we're going to give to the city staff on the 2017-2018 budget. Is there a motion to that effect?
So move.
A motion that this be tonight's agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second and all in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no. This becomes our agenda. For the public, we have been on last two Saturdays working our budget up. We came a long, long way. Normally, we might have finished last Saturday, but there was enough loose ends that we decided as a council to meet tonight to complete that formal look. And also, we were looking toward the Green Bridge bids being in, which they now are as we look at that in conjunction with the budget. Dan and Jim, I think both you were in on wanting this meeting. I don't want to leave anything out. Dan, anything you want to add for tonight?
No, again, I think it was just an idea of kind of giving James a little time to digest what we'd talked about and see what additional changes, adjustments that were in the budget and maybe get a little solider numbers, like you say, understanding where the bridge came in and what it would do to the budget as far as the tax levy and that type of thing.
Yeah, kind of the general ideas. Have one last wrap-up of it. Got to be a long day. Those Saturdays get to be a long day, so this is kind of one last look at it with fresh eyes.
Sounds good and certainly good to be thorough when it comes to budget, but also to digest the ambition of our town. We have so much demand for projects, but we have to make sure we're as wise as we can. And so tonight, we're going to try to ask for wisdom to do the best we can to meet all the needs of the town, but at the same time, be practical in what we can and can't do. City Administrator, thank you for your tremendous hard work on this budget, both on both Saturdays, along with the city staff, and also the extra work that comes into tonight. And I know we run the city anyway, and this is kind of on top of everything, so we doubly appreciate. We, just a luxury that we certainly enjoy, and we just look forward to tonight's discussion. Anything that maybe you could, do you want to do some lead-in here on this?
Yes, sir. Well, I guess just kind of start by any questions council has to date, where we are, what we'd like to see more going forward. I think the last time we met, we had ran through some of the smaller side projects we had done. Looking at the consensus that council had given at the time, we would probably remove the 12th Street Northwest sidewalk project, since that really did not have a lot of favor, I guess, in it. The others seemed to be presentable to go forward, but again, the 12th Street Northwest, probably remove from the list and take that $50,000 out of what would be our additional bonded projects. While it's not a tremendous impact, because on a 10-year note, it's only $5,000. It's about a cent, maybe two cents tops, but still, it's one thing that we would not go ahead and go forward with. As far as the others, there seemed to be a majority of interest in moving forward with those at the time. I guess I'm just hoping on what direction council would like to take at this moment and see if there's anything left that we need to address that they would like to discuss and then try and have some direction going into the March 6 hearing out of tonight. And I guess that's my ultimate goal.
Right. So out of the 10 projects, there was only one that we struck from the list? Is that correct?
We only had six projects.
Six.
Yeah, there was one. I had consensus of four on all the others that we had, so there was just the one.
I was thinking we had a discussion around the crypt and if we wanted to repair that.
That's the other one we'd have to look at, which was a side project that was in a different area for funding. But yeah, the crypt is another one that I've talked to Tab about it, and he can shed a little more light on this as far as kind of what we're thinking of doing going forward.
Yeah, we really don't know what the scope is of that is yet, so we're going to have folks come in and experts come in and look at it. We also are looking at historic preservation grants and see if we are eligible for that. So what we want to do is, it's got to get done, otherwise it's going to fall in. We're going to get some good numbers, so you come back later on when we have the good numbers and talk to you again.
So we may just go ahead and pull that for now, because I don't feel comfortable going in with a number that we have a, I want to say we have a fair idea, we estimate it would be in that range. When you look at the damage inside, it could be far beyond that. So I think we're probably going to pull that out of the capital improvement fund, $50,000, and just not go ahead with that. So again, it's not really a taxable item that affects, but again, it's a project we're probably going to pull aside and just not do for now until we get better idea of numbers and what it may take, and then it can come back at a different time, maybe even another year or mid-year, depending on how we go and find out what we need to know. But that is another one that we had listed that we're probably just going to pull out and not do.
Let me refresh my memory. Is the alley reconstruction on east side, was that one of the projects?
It is.
And I think there was some concern over timing with the Bremer Avenue construction. Is that not an issue now, or that?
I think it can be worked around. I mean, it's a two-year project with Bremer Avenue. That particular phase, I'm trying to think, Mike, would be 2018 most likely, that east alley behind the Printery, Dean's Lightbox.
I don't know for sure.
Yeah, it's, it can be worked around. I mean, it's not a huge issue for us, and that's not the only one that we were looking at. There was a couple that we had talked about also, the one that runs behind East Bremer Diner, the poorhouse right through there has gotten broken up quite a bit as well. That's the other photo that we had up. That most likely is a 2018 project, as it's in the downtown. Other than that first block of downtown on either side of the bridge, that would be a 2018 project. And I thought Dean's is right in that timeframe as well. So depending on when it gets to that portion, it's, it can be probably worked through.
And we had some discussion about moving that into lost versus property tax.
Certainly up to you as a council. I mean, we can do that. I know we have things scheduled in the loss. There's probably room for it in there. It really comes down to whatever you'd prefer to fund it, if you want to do the project is all.
I guess the reason I brought it up was because I think we're looking at the Third Street Bridge project being all property tax without any other funding source. I'm just trying to free up as much as we can from debt service, I guess.
Sure.
My suggestion to work it into lost.
No, we can definitely look at that. I don't see why it couldn't be done that way. We're just trying to put the funding where it made, you know, kind of the most sense, for us at least, from the standpoint that most of that project, the Bremer Avenue Reconstruction, will be funded through geo-bonds, and that was sort of a side extension of it. But either way, we can certainly look at that.
You're only talking another two, three cents, but we might be up to a nickel already with the two projects.
Sure. But if it's more appropriate to take it from there, we absolutely can.
Just a reminder to the council to speak right into the mic. I think it's very helpful to our guest councilperson, and so...
I agree with Dan on doing the alleys out of the loss, though, because I think that makes a lot of sense.
Good. General consensus, council, look at taking from loss instead, that $75,000?
Yeah, and in a similar vein, with the CUNO water main, could that be a TIF? We have...
It is possible. And again, as we look forward at TIF, I know we have a lot of projects that have a piece of that. We're trying to look at it also, too. When you look at Parkway and that portion possibly TIF, and you look at, but absolutely, I think come as well, if you look at the size of TIF and what's in there and what's available, we can certainly do that. But I think that's a possibility also. We can absolutely take that from TIF.
Where do we sit with Champions Ridge? And are we putting any money away if that comes back, because it most likely will, or what are our plans?
No, I don't have any direction to do that. We've not seen any indication that it's going forward right now. I don't have anything planned in for it. I don't know where we'd acquire the funding. It'd probably have to come from debt as well, $600,000 roughly.
They are working with the estate, and the state attorney is talking the bill, and they're working things out, so that is going on. I have a feeling they're going to come back with a proposal at some point that is different than the proposal they had before, but we would still, it would still be acquiring the land. And so I just don't want us to get blindsided by that in May or whatever it comes, but it's definitely something that's coming back, and lawyers are talking, and it's going to happen, so.
That's, I mean, is that correct?
I haven't had anything. I'm just waiting for people to get ahold of me. I haven't talked to anybody about anything.
I mean, if council were to vote that through, I guess we'd find the best way we could fund it at that time, whether it be adding it to the bond or whatever we would do if it's not sold by then. We just have to figure out the funding going forward.
It's not going to sell before the, I think it'll come to us before that, so, from what I understand.
We'd estimate that's 15 cents on the levy roughly. I mean, if council wants to factor an extra 15 cents in on the levy as we go into the hearing to cover that, we certainly can. And that's where I look to tell you to make that decision. I mean, it's going to be a matter of how you pay it back, how do you pay it off, what do you do? And if you're anticipating it goes through, again, I'm taking my direction from council as a whole. If you want to do that, we certainly can.
I just want to bring it up, just because I knew, I know that it's going to come back. I mean, I just know it is. So their estate is good with it, and really what it's coming down to is the Ball Diamond Group figuring out a proposal to bring to council that they can prove that they've raised so much money for, you know, we buy the land and all that stuff. So Bill, if he hasn't, will already be getting, you know, phone calls and to draft up a new or, you know, a new agreement type of thing, so. But I know it's not technically in the budget, but I don't, you know, I don't know how we want to handle that if, or if, like you said, we handle it when it comes up and deal with it then, but.
Sure. I wonder, I guess what, as we're, I'm just kind of listening to this good discussion of different projects and so forth. We had talked at one of the meetings about maybe having a bigger view or a wider view of basically, here's all the projects, here's how they're funded, that's how it would affect the levy. Could we do that at some point? Because I'm, because I'm hearing that each individual project might raise the levy a little bit. And I understood a couple of years ago that, you know, our debt was being paid off fast enough that in the future, projects wouldn't impact the levy. So that seems to be a little bit contradictory. So I'm just curious if we could have a look at that and...
Well, I don't know who would have told you that, but I certainly never said that.
No, it was, it was prior to you.
For someone to say that you'd have millions of dollars of projects that you would not affect the levy, I'm not sure why they would say something like that.
That was exactly, yeah. So that was exactly what was discussed, because I was, I was taking the PFM spreadsheets and, because our valuation went up significantly, so I was basically backing it down so I could see if, what kind of room we had if, you know, things would go backwards. And, you know, we were told that the debt was being paid off, which it is, the debt's being paid off fast enough to where projects in the future, you know, some of the things that we're talking about wouldn't impact the levy. So if we could just have a look at, at that, so.
At what moment would you like to do that?
Whenever we have time.
Go through it right now if you want. I mean, I know what they're going to do and not going to do from the impact of the levy, depending on what projects you want to discuss. We can talk.
I mean, we talked, we talked through when James presented these, these, these six projects. I mean, we talked through all of that at that point in time.
Those six projects, they're a total couple hundred thousand, right? Those are, yeah, they, those, that's not...
Oh, you're talking about, what are you talking about?
Yeah, the impact of Champions Ridge, Green Bridge.
Overall, you know, Green Bridge, all that.
Those are, those are the ones, and I suppose it's not a matter of chart, it's just a matter of information. We know what that would impact the budget. It'd probably be good timing on...
Well, the Green Bridge you shared with us the last time already would be about 70 cents.
Seventy-four point nine five cents. Exactly. Seventy-five cents is the estimate based on the amortization that Spear gave on a 10-year note, interest close to what it is now. It's about a $350,000 payment. So it's a 75 cent hit to the levy. $600,000 for Champions Ridge would be about 15 cents. It's usually about a quarter for a million. That's a number we've been working off. That's fairly true when you put the interest into it.
So I wonder, is that possible to, because I think we've had that in the past, haven't, I mean, where we have all the funding sources, have all the projects, and we get an idea of where they fit in, and, I mean, can we do that? We don't have to approve it before March. Do we have time between now and then to take a look at that? Because to me, that would, it would be kind of the last look at some of the projects, trying to prioritize them, you know, if we take some of these things out, you know, because now we're, we're kind of, I'm afraid we're, we're at a little bit too high of a level, talking about, you know, it's only a nickel here and a nickel there. I'd like to see it if we could.
And we can. That's what I'm talking to you now about, is I don't know when you want to see it. We can talk about it right now. I'm not sure what you want to see. Do you want to see the great big long spreadsheet PFM used to prepare, or what exactly do you want to see?
I think, I don't know what the other, the rest of council, maybe I'm the only one that wants to see this.
Didn't you share a spreadsheet that showed our debt service?
I did that same spreadsheet, and on a 1% annual growth, it looks like it fits.
I was trying to find it in our packet, but I mean, it's basically...
I didn't send it out. It's a 11 by 17, big long.
We didn't add any more debt, you know, in eight years, nine years, we're going to be debt-free type thing, but, again, maybe I'm confusing the conversation here when I, my understanding was at the $2.57 debt levy that had everything in there that we've talked about up to this point except for the Green Bridge.
And Champions Ridge.
And when I said, Al, if we move a couple of these projects around that frees up a nickel or two, that would be, we could either decrease the debt levy or use that to help offset what we'd see the Green Bridge adding to it.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, I can get to the big long spreadsheet to look out and try and predict the next 10, 15 years. I can do that. I'm not sure what that's really worth though.
Yeah, I don't know where the advantage of that is.
We're dealing with projects today, we're trying to fund. If I could, we're dealing with projects today we're trying to fund, and I've told you right now that the levy is 75 cents on the bridge. It's about 15 for Champions Ridge if it comes around. That's what we're dealing with today.
Yeah, I guess that's why I'm just confused why, you know, and I guess I saw that the debt was going down very quickly, and there'd be, there'd be room to stick some of this in there so it wouldn't impact the debt levies. That's what I was just looking for.
Well, I understand. I've never said that, though. I've never said it.
No, it wasn't you, yeah.
It could be. I've figured out the capacity part of it, which was the first problem we had initially. I think the capacity works. As far as the debt levy itself, depends on the value and what you have an appetite for for taxes on it. As I state, we're to 258, we might be to 250 now, or we can re-figure where it's going to be. If you get rid of all the projects, which is your choice as well, we'd be at about a 240, just like we said we would with the engineering and the property acquisition for the Parkway. It's 1.2 million roughly, it'd be at 240. So if you look at taking all these out, you're to 240, get rid of these projects, go with the Green Bridge, puts you at a 315. Champions Ridge puts you to 330, if you do them both. But I mean, that's where we are. That's what the levy looks like. It's another 90 cents on those two projects added on to the levy we're at. So when we came in, we're to 14.027, rate of 14.927. I mean, I can show you the spreadsheets. We can certainly get those out. I can have them to you for Monday's meeting on the 20th, or I can try and email them out this week.
I just sent it, if that's okay. Is it just like an Excel thing or something?
Absolutely. It's just like PFM did. I just carved off pieces I didn't really think were necessary, but I've done it to where it works. It gets extremely tight in a year or two, and depending on how valuations go, but using a 1% increase, I don't think is that bad at all. It's very conservative, since we average quite a bit more than that, it looks like. But again, at 1%, it works. It gets extremely tight in a year or two at the 80% mark, but it works. And that's factoring in, you know, Parkway, if it comes in at 9 million on top of the million, two, 10, two, 10, five, somewhere in there. The Bremer Avenue Reconstruction at 4.5, 4.8, somewhere in there. I mean, those are all factored into it. I went out three to four, five years, because past that, I'm not sure how much it's really worth to look at, you know.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, in the short term, if there's something that could be reprioritized.
Sure. I mean, it's the decisions you have now, and again, we've gone back over this again and again, Green Bridge, Champions Ridge, do you want to include it in the budget now or not? That's your shortest-term items to look at right now.
But there's other projects, though, in that whole list of things that are, needed to be funded and...
But he's got consensus on that already. Why would we want to repeat that whole conversation?
Maybe we, we might. I mean, if we can...
But we did. I mean, it's not we might, we did.
Which ones? I mean, I guess we just talked about moving the, the alleys to lost. We talked about moving that one to TIF.
Right.
Well, those, those are already...
A little. We've talked, I mean, the big ones in there are the engineering for Cedar River Parkway.
The engineering acquisition, that's the biggest piece.
And I guess I had some questions on that, too. I mean, I know we want to move ahead with that, and I'm assuming we're going to try to get a federal grant, or are we going at it alone?
If we want to try for a Tiger Grant again, we sure can. We're more than willing to do it. It'd be your fourth, fourth year?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to get it.
Well, that's the only federal funding we'll probably have a shot at, but otherwise, we'd have to go it alone.
Not knowing what they're doing.
That's, I mean, I guess, and you, where do you, so you think you can fit in the other $10 million to actually build the Parkway immediately, like next year type of thing?
Yeah. Capacity, we're there. And if you look at the, if you use the local option, as was presented to the public and they approved it, that 60% mark, a chunk of it would go there, and we'd hope the TIF would cover the others, so it would not be an impact to taxes, if that works. Now, if it doesn't, you have to look at a small geo to maybe get the difference of that, but yeah, 9 million is easy to do.
You're looking, you're looking to use all of lost and...
No, not all of lost.
Or some of lost and some of TIF and do it without general fund.
That's, that's the ultimate goal. That's what we've tried to do. And it looks like it works on paper, but again, that's on paper.
And that fits within our debt capacity, is what you're saying. Okay. That, that was my only concern, is, you know, what if we push that out one year? What if we don't do the million-dollar planning this year and do that next budget? And then that saves us, we just move the Parkway one year out. How much does that save us this year on the debt levy, you know?
Quarter.
And then that, maybe then stuff will come off, start coming off next year, and maybe buy us a little time so we're not so tight right in there?
Yeah, that's, and that's basically what I'm looking at, is, you know, there might be some...
So you're looking at pushing off the Parkway for a year?
I don't know.
That's just one...
Well, that's what I need to know.
Yeah.
If you're thinking of these things, I need to know that to go to hearing.
That would be irresponsible of me now to say, well, yeah, I just, I guess that's why I was kind of wanting to look at that, just to see what our options are. And I don't, I mean, if...
I guess that's where I'm confused. We've had this discussion how many times? It was a big consensus through council to go ahead with Parkway. So we have the engineering agreement ready. We have the...
Wasn't, it wasn't. I guess that depends what you say.
It was voted on and we're now committed to a million dollars.
It was voted on unanimously, go forward with it. That's why we put it in the budget to start with.
Yeah. My only, my only challenge, though, is, is, you know, there's other things that are coming up that we're talking about increasing levy. I mean, to me, I just, I'm not, I'm not saying to return back history, I just, I just want to see it.
Well, see, do you not want to increase levy then? Because that eliminates bridge and everything then, if that's the case. Because 75 cents in the levy, unless you want to try and cut that deep to find space for it, that's what I'm kind of questioning.
Going back to the beginning of my question, that I had understood, and maybe I incorrectly understood it, but I understood that some of these projects, we wouldn't need to increase the levy because we would have room.
And I've said, I've never said that. So where you're getting it from, I understand, Dave, but this is going forward.
He's not saying, he's not saying you ever said that. And I know what he's saying.
What I'm getting at, because we're losing focus here, is going forward, I've told you multiple times now, we will increase the levy X cents per project if we're going to do them. And so I'm not sure why we're going back to, we've been told we weren't increasing levy.
Yep.
I can't help that.
Yep.
Today going forward, I've told you what the increase will be, and you have to decide you want to do it or not.
You're the man that's here now, and that's...
Well, I'm just saying, you have to tell me, do you want to do it or not? I can get you the spreadsheet that shows where it all is.
I'm just bringing up scenarios and questions, so evidently, you know, since we already voted on the Parkway, we have to go through with it. Well, we already voted on the Green Bridge, that passed seven to zero, so that should be in the budget.
I can add it to it, 75 cents in the levy.
Right? I mean, that passed seven to zero to repair the Green Bridge, so why wouldn't that be in if we already passed a million dollars to do the Parkway?
We haven't passed the, accepting the bid yet, or the...
Oh, we passed them to work on it for a whole year for $300,000 and do it.
Just a little history on that, Wes, just so we're all on the same page. When we passed the repair, we fielded the question of if this got too high, do we have relook points? The relook point was when the peers came in. We got to the peers, we decided that we wouldn't relook at it because we wanted to get the bids in. The time when we relook at it was after the bids come in, so that's going to be done. The question is, on the bridge, is whether, where does 2.4 pit fit in in terms, is that too high, too low? Is that a good deal? Is that not? Is that a good use? So that's a decision we got to make.
I think we're past the look point because we've already spent so much money in three years' time on it.
No, we're not. We, we set that as, as part of the process.
Yeah, I would disagree with that, though. I mean, some might have disagreed that way.
You disagree, but, oh, go ahead.
So, I mean, that's not the way everyone looks at it.
We always have the chance to look back at things, even, even anything in here, if there's, if we budget for a police car and it comes in more than we expected, we could look back and say, no, we're not going to accept that, we're not going to get the police car right now. So that's, that's, we've always got that ability on the final say, whether it's the bid price comes in, whether we accept that bid price or not. And we've had bid prices come in where we said, we don't want to do that. We did that with the Gulf Pond project, where it came in higher than we wanted to do, and so we pushed it back. So it's, it's just a matter of deciding, you know, do we accept it and go forward with it, and then how do we fit that in to the budget if we do go forward with it? I was just wondering, I, this is the, the debt payoff?
Probably for general fund, I guess.
For the general fund? Is that, would that, does that give us the picture as far as how it's peeling off fairly quickly?
It, it does, and it's the last time I showed you charts and slides as well for geo-debt and total debt that we see it stair stepping off. And so it is coming off, but sometimes it's not coming off fast what you're adding on, and it may never do that. That depends on how you want to do this. And that's where you get the issue of, do you do interest-only bonds, which I highly recommend not doing again? you do interest-only bonds, which I highly recommend not doing again? Do you do, you know, where it's only a partial payment of principal, things like that? I mean, I've always gone in with the idea of, you know, ten years is a, is a bond I'd like to hit. I don't like to go twelve, fifteen. I really do not want to do. So we try to always work off of ten years. And a ten-year bond, and that's where we go back to this conversation in general, a ten-year bond and that bridge is seventy-five cents on the levy, it's a three hundred and fifty thousand on the payment. That's where you're at. I'm asking if you're gonna do the bridge or not today. I'm not asking for any of that. I just want to know, do you want to include that in the budget as a what-if? Because at the hearing, if for some reason you vote against it, at the hearing, you can take it out. You do not have to have that high a levy for that. I don't believe, I can confirm it again, I've talked to bond counsel many times on this, you would just not do that much debt. You would just not issue it. Now, you may still keep the same payment initially, you may not, but I think you can go down. It cannot go up at hearing. And that's what I'm trying to establish tonight, is a ceiling to go to the publication for budget, which has to be done a week from today, so that we can have the hearing on the sixth and actually work through this. So I just need to get the ceiling established. And if that includes seventy-five cents on the bridge and fifteen for Champions Ridge, then we put it in, and we go to hearing.
But I guess what I'm asking on this, this chart for fiscal year seventeen eighteen, it's showing, am I reading, it serves general obligations, three point three eight million total with, with principal interest. But that has the water and sewer and TIF all figured in, that we're paying out of it. So what I'm looking for is, is the GO portion of it, that's the tax. Is that what's called regular?
Yeah, I believe so. It would be regular.
So it's about eight hundred and sixty this year that we're paying out of taxes on, into it?
Should be closer to a million.
And one, well, eight hundred and sixty for regular and a hundred and fifty for interest, I guess.
Yeah. So it'll be about a million-ish roughly.
Okay. And then, then next year, that drops off to six hundred and eighty, plus a hundred and thirty, so about eight hundred and fourteen. So we've dropped to two hundred thousand. What, what is that, two hundred thousand payment capacity gives us what in a bond?
That's what got you the Parkway engineering, the other projects, without going really above the two forty. The other projects, I should say, move it to two fifty-eight. But the engineering of a million two is what got you to the two forty. So that's what backfilled that spot in. It's like we talked about, that did not raise the levy, engineering a million two. The other ones raised it slightly. It was eighteen cents for all of these. It'd be probably nine cents now. When you look at, about half of them are reduced out. And so then if you, again, go to the bridge, it's seventy-five and the...
Well, what I'm asking is, we're at, we're at, we're at the two fifty-seven right now with, with a million coming out of property taxes basically covering for interest and principal.
Yep, that's a close estimate.
Next year, it's about eight hundred and fourteen thousand coming out of property taxes scheduled right now.
Right.
What is that extra two hundred that comes off to keep, that would keep the levy at the two fifty-seven, right?
It'd keep the levy at two forty, which is where it was in seventeen, sixteen, seventeen.
Okay.
And that, again, is the two hundred thousand on the payment is the...
But that two hundred that comes off, what does that give us to a levy for next year if we were, or give us in terms of bond amount that we might be able to get for that kind of a payment? Just trying to figure out how much more above that two fifty-seven we might go next year, put the bond there.
I don't know. You got my head spinning a little bit, Jim. I guess I'm asking what you're wanting to know. I mean, you have enough to do the Parkway, the Parkway engineering now, which is about a quarter. That's about twenty-five cents on the levies, was, was about a quarter. That's what kept you flat, roughly.
Right.
Otherwise, you'd have been at like a two fifteen, I believe, something like that, with the fiscal eighteen debt that you have to pay off that you've already issued. So you'd be at a two fifteen. So the quarter allowed you to get the million two roughly to two forty. So if you don't do the Parkway, you'd have that two fifteen, and that would flow into next year, and it may be a little more coming off. But again, you'd have to go back and see what we think it's gonna be with valuation. But, but that's what I was working off. I was trying to get this in, keep that flat. These are above and beyond. And that's what we presented to you. Probably half of it now gone, eight, nine cents, maybe, something like that. And then it gets us right back to where we started, you know, Bridge, Champions Ridge.
Which I think that's good. You know, I just brought, if we slid, I'm not saying don't do the Parkway. I'm just saying if we slid that one year back, that saves us a million bucks this year and, you know...
Freezes about a quarter on the levy.
Right. And so that could help us slide in stuff that we know that's coming, you know. And, and whether you want to include Champions Ridge or not, that, you know, I, people are working stuff out, but again, it may, that, that's more up in the air. The Green Bridge, we obviously know we have bids for, and we're voting on it next week. So I mean, I think, like you said, it'd be easier to include that in and take it out if it wouldn't, for some reason, pass than to not have it in at all, 'cause more than likelihood, it's, you know, it came in under budget and it passed. So I would rather have that in there and feel safe. And then maybe we can, you know, like what Dan said, you know, we've moved, like you said, you've moved a lot of projects out and moved it to loss and TIF and saved some sense that way. If, if, if moving the Parkway one year out helps us at all, you know, I'm just asking that as a question. If that, if that would help us at all this year to fit something in, we have a little bit of debt fall off next year and it fits better in the schedule?
Yeah, it's all possible.
To me, to me, it's not a deal breaker to move the Parkway just one year out. I mean, it's not a deal breaker, because it's gonna happen regardless.
Not to interrupt, are you talking the engineering part of it, or the physically building?
The engineering part of it.
Since we've already approved a contract, we ask them to wait a year before they start their work?
I defer that to Mike, I guess.
Have it be a valid bid price?
We didn't bid.
Probably yes and no.
Again, part of this was to hopefully position us for federal funding that may or may not come down.
If it comes, that was the intent, yes. If it comes.
I mean, you're more than welcome, as a council, to make those decisions. How they play out with the public, with the consultants, with contractors, are what you're gonna have to live with.
And you told us in the past, too, that when we send out for bids, and a company puts in a fair bid, that if we don't accept those bids, that would have repercussions as well. You've said that in the past with projects, so...
Right.
So that's why I'm saying, we should definitely put the Green Bridge in, because if we don't follow through with that, it's gonna have repercussions as well.
This is why we do strategic planning. This is why we went through, we vetted the projects. It was asked to move forward or not to move forward on them. It is why, at a council meeting, we reviewed the projects, we reviewed the timing, we reviewed, do you want to proceed with awarding, or with reviewing and approving an engineering agreement before you go through the budget?
Yep.
We, we had those discussions to try to head this off.
No, and I know all that, and obviously it passed, so I'm just bringing it up as a question. I wasn't for that. I would have been for putting it off, but, so I'm just bringing it up. But if everyone else thinks it's fine, it's fine. I'm just bringing it up as a suggestion.
And it saves a quarter on the levy.
And that's a, you know, it's a decent, it's a decent question.
I'm just saying, you know, we gotta fit the Green Bridge in, because, you know, we had the bids came in.
What you're all looking for is some sort of maneuverability on this budget, just to see whether we could make things all work out within all the projects we have.
It's not possible to move it. It's not possible to move it, because I understand that, too.
And that's a legitimate issue. It's just that we've...
In regards to Wes's question, within the contract that we signed with Stanley Consultants, there are provisions that, you know, you don't have to follow through. Okay? Things come up. Things happen. You are legally obligated to pay them for work that they have completed for the time and effort put in. But you can, at that point, break the contract.
Really, if we would do that, we would have to break the contract and then have them re-sign a new contract for next year, if they were willing to do that. And that's what you're saying, the risk comes in, is if they feel...
Labor costs change.
Sure. Yep.
So I, I think in that respect, they would be, it'd be very appropriate to, if, if it is, suspend it for a year to give that consideration.
So it's just, it's just a suggestion I have, so...
Yeah, thank you. David, do you want to go in?
I guess I'm, I mean, we've got, you know, I just say we've got some individuals in the audience that look like they want to speak. I'm not opposed to that, I guess. Just me.
Just to soon let the public know that this would only be council tonight, and many people have weighed in. I didn't want to make an exception. We have to get this budget hammered out, and wisdom needs to be reached tonight. And if we get into bridge conversations beyond the, the merits of, of the budget, I'm afraid we won't get anywhere.
So I agree with Wes, as far as putting the Green Bridge in, in lieu of approval next Monday night.
Do you want me to just add that levy in, go to hearing? You know, we'll have it in there on a what-if. Let me preface, if I say worst possible scenario, you know, it's no, but that would be the largest amount we would have, would be what I'm trying to work towards, possibility-wise, which would be the bridge and engineering. And then, of course, you would adjust accordingly if need be at the hearing. So you'd have the extra seventy-five cent levy in there. I guess, from a consensus at council, is there any, I know we can't vote on it probably in a sense, but what is the opinion of moving the Parkway out another year? Do you want to leave that in as well? I know Wes has brought that up. It's a good possibility. It's wherever everybody wants to sit on it. Do you want to include it as well, or do you want to maybe move it out a year and not include it going in?
So that, maybe that's why I was just asking for the spreadsheet, so we can noodle about some of those things. We can see the impact, and, and that's what, that's what I want. I mean, for me to, for me to approve a budget, I need to see the, the pros and cons and do some scenario analysis. That's, that's how, that's how it would work, so...
You made your point before, but I think that the...
That's why I asked you, too. I mean, I know, we're just moving it down the line, so it's not like we're not gonna pay for it. But it would free up that levy amount this year that would help us not explode it, you know, for one year, and then maybe we have some cushion as stuff comes off next year. And, you know, I know what Mike's saying, that the, the contract might be more next year, 'cause labor costs go up and we have to deal with that. But I wouldn't think it would be that much different. You know, our plan is to still do the Parkway, but if we just slide it one year, the engineering one year off, is that really gonna...
It's not, it's not unusual to...
But yet it helps us a lot this one year.
Speed up, slow down, engineering development. That's not unusual. It's not unusual. I don't know why this...
Back to our, January sixteenth meeting, I specifically raised the question, do we want to vote on the contract for engineering on the bridge, not knowing, or the Parkway Bridge project, not knowing where the Green Bridge was? We had a good discussion. It passed five to nothing to go ahead with it. Get it going. Have it shovel-ready, in case there's federal money down the road somewhere. I guess I'm at a loss why we're continually going back. We've, we've looked at spreadsheets. We've talked about where things slotted in many times. Where things slot in two years, three years from now will be a discussion for two, three years from now. I don't know how they impact today's budget.
I don't think we, we haven't seen a spreadsheet, though. If we can get that, great.
I, you know, I understand, I understand both sides. So I mean, I, to me, we can just do a hand raise, and if, if I'm the only one that wants to do it, we can move on. We don't need to talk about it for forty-five minutes.
We'll understand that.
So I just thought it might be a way to free up some debt levy. Now, we can fit the Green Bridge. The Parkway gets planned next year and move on with that. It's just a way of fitting more things in.
I'm in favor of leaving it in, because of all of the work and discussion, the work that's been done and the discussions that we've had. I mean, I, I'm not opposed to putting other things in that are important to people, but I don't see the need to take that out. Let's see what the, let's see what the levy is with, with taking these couple of things out that we talked about. There's five hundred thousand dollars worth on this, on these six projects. I would be in favor of, you know, doing that, leaving the, leaving the Cedar River Parkway in. As you all know, I'm not a huge fan of doing the, the, the bridge, but if that's where the, the majority is, put that into. I, I think you can make a case for it. I understand what you're saying about why you want to do that. I, I would not want to put Champions Ridge in, because we have virtually no information on that.
Yeah, and I can understand that.
And we, we'd realize that we might be raising taxes just a little, relatively little. But we have a lot of demand from the public. And, and this is the opportune time for our town. We need that Parkway. We need it to be engineered, and we're going to probably have federal monies coming down the pike. We need to be ready. We have to do Bremer Avenue. We have to do all these projects that we have scheduled. We do need the alleys if we're gonna keep our businesses.
And again, if I understood correctly, I mean, we're setting the maximum. So, I mean, by doing that, so that, I mean, we don't have to end up there ultimately. But we're, but we're setting the cap.
Because you can go up at hearing. So if you decide you want to add something later at hearing, you can't do that unless you cut something else out, equivalent. So when we set that levy, and Jennifer, is that correct, then, once we set that and publish it, that's our cap. That's our ceiling. That's it. So you can always come down. You cannot go up at, at hearing.
You know, and I think it's important for everyone in the public to know, too, it's not just one project that might raise your taxes, or this one project. It's everything. I mean, it's, it's employee salaries, it's benefits, it's, you know, I guess we're buying new monitors, which I don't really think we need. You know, there's all kinds of...
You can take those out.
Yeah, I'd take those out in a second. This is fine. I can see it, you know. So I mean, there's a whole bunch of stuff that goes into this. And so it's not just one project here, one project there. Some of them have bigger impacts than others, but there's stuff, you know, there's a million light items in here that we can talk, you know, go through and scratch. There's...
Fact, part, go ahead, David. Kind of got sidetracked on just one, one out of many projects.
Right.
On that, I guess, I agree, there's, there's a lot of other things that we can look at.
There are, but there are certain, there are certain ones that have, you know, a much, much more natural impact.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I think that's why we're gravitating toward those, is because, I mean, you can go line by line forever and not, 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 you know, not, on a lot of items and not have hardly any impact at all.
It's gonna help a little bit.
And the reason you, you know, we gravitate toward these is because they are the ones that will impact it the most.
Well, and we've covered the rest of it already. These are the last few big things to talk about, do we include it or not? As I said earlier, with the bids in, we now know what that impact's gonna be approximately. And I can have Spear run another form. We're going off about a two-nine, three million dollar total project, 'cause that's how much it'll take to actual borrow, to pay the engineering and the borrowing and the monitoring of it and the construction. I mean, it's, it's, those bids are part of it, but then there's the rest of it that we have to cover as well, that we've already, did the reimbursement resolution. We can get that paid for now with the bond. So it's about a two-nine, maybe a little more than two-nine is what the number may be. It depends on the alternate, the options a council will look at, if you go ahead and approve that. So that's ballpark. If you went with three, it gives you a very small cushion. And for me personally, I'd like to see that if you go forward with it, because the one thing, and I'll ask Mike from right on this, when we did the borrowing samples on the abutments, we just did the one, did we not? Or did we do both of them?
On the bridge abutments, we did just the north.
Okay. So we weren't a hundred percent sure how the other one would look. We assume it's okay, but if it wasn't, I'd like just a little, just in case.
Well, the, you know, the south, the south one's in good condition. And...
I think it's the south, yeah. The north, we knew we had to replace some. I just don't know how far we have to replace it. That's kind of the unknown. So that's why a lot of what I'm factoring off is a three million dollar. It only gives you a eighty thousand dollar cushion on a three million dollar potential issue, or the two point four million for construction. So it's not a tremendous amount of cushion. But if something were to happen, I'd hate to halt it, because now we're out.
And like you said, that three million, we did retroactive, so we've already spent, I think, around three hundred thousand with WHKS. And so...
Yeah, about two something, and then we have another couple hundred to have them monitor this from start to finish.
So that all, that will be covered. The two hundred and fifty, whatever we've already spent, will get put into a bond and...
Yep. The two point nine-ish covers everything from what we've done, start to what we hope would be finished, and that would be end of it, be the two-nine to three, somewhere in there. So...
Councilman Lappi, you want to weigh in here a little bit?
No, I, I agree. We just leave, put that in, and we'll discuss it or approve it or deny it, I guess, at hearing. But to your point, we can't go back down after...
Right. Right. We can always go down. We just can't go back up at hearing.
Councilman Scherer, do you want to weigh in on that?
No, I just want to say, in terms of the, the Parkway, I would not favor delaying that. I think we should keep it in and keep it going.
And the, and when we get to the bridge, to factor it in now?
Well, we can factor it into the budget. We certainly don't know where the, where we're gonna end up with it.
Yes. Another big discussion, but...
For another week, yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to get into that. That's next week's hearing.
But this is important process tonight, and I really appreciate the depth of the, including options. We wanted to just see if there's any easy way out. And so, because if there is. But again, this is your area of strength. We thank you for your huge amount And, uh, so, uh, 'cause if there is, but again, this is your area of strength, we thank you for your huge amount of work, city administrator, and, and, um, so I think that's somewhat of the marching orders. Any other, anything else we need to do?
Yeah, from a capital standpoint, I mean, we'll reroute these accordingly. We only have two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand of five-fifteen left, and that's the hangar insulation, cemetery roads, and the concrete repairs. Those are the only three remaining. I'll add in the, uh, payment, get Jennifer to put in a Green Bridge estimate for that, so it's there. And that, I won't get into the whole pre-levy thing, I'll try and figure out how to explain that come hearing, 'cause that's a whole nother mess in itself that you do, but you don't, you can make the payment, but you can't. It's, yeah, I'm trying to think if there's anything else that I need, honestly. Unless there's questions from council, that was the big thing, was where do we want to set that debt levy, so to speak, so that we can go in and finish this out?
I know it was a big effort for all of us to be here, but we're all together tonight, and that's really helpful. It's, I feel a sense of strength here tonight. Pro-Tam, do you want last words on this, where we're at and where we're going?
I just have a couple of questions, generally not related to the projects or debt, but just stuff that I've been asked from people. Or are we, or you want to wrap it all up?
I was going to, uh, if, if, if you think it's really, really important, you cannot not do it, otherwise I prefer just to pick it up next Monday, but if it's really important, go ahead.
I guess, I, I mean, I know it's not a big moneymaker, but ten thousand for monitors, does anyone here really think we need new monitors? Can't we just cut that?
Certainly, if it's council, doesn't matter to me.
No, I know, but I'm just saying...
It's, uh, three for the monitors and then seventy, eight hundred, I think, for the towers, it'd be the whole thing for ten, ten-eight, otherwise the monitors are three.
Yeah, and I mean, I know we have old systems, but really only use them to view the agenda online and do a little Google searching at the time, but...
That one's budget-oriented, you don't have to worry about that one.
Yeah, it's all budget stuff I have questions on. Unless someone really thinks we need, I, I personally am okay with what we have, I mean. I know it's not a big amount, but it's ten thousand dollars.
Still.
I mean, yeah, I'd, I'd take ten thousand dollars.
Counsel, anyone else want to weigh in?
I'm okay with the ones we have.
I think that's kind of what we said when we were talking, talking about it at the budget meeting, so.
Yeah, that we weren't going to, yeah.
All right, get rid of them.
Number two.
Just, you know, the water and sewer raises, um, I know why we're doing the five percent each year, and that's to pay for the water main on Greymour Avenue. Mostly, I feel it's because normally we would have probably borrowed for that, but we really don't have room to borrow for it, so we're raising our water and sewer fees to help offset that cost.
We'll borrow for it and then not tax for it, it would come from fees. It's really six of one. You can do either way. The discussion we had is, is about who pays taxes, who doesn't pay taxes.
Right.
Water fees, sewer fees.
So the question I've gotten from some people is, since we are bumping it up ten percent to pay for this project, when the project's done and paid for, are we gonna drop it back that ten percent? Because we really only need that money right now to do a project.
We talked about that, too.
Forever, yeah, but I think maybe for Wes's sake, it's good to, again, you're here, that, that we're going to...
Have you talked about it, or are we actually going to do it?
We're gonna revisit the, what we, what the way Mike presented it and what we all wanted to have confirmed and we're serious about, is that we would come back and see where we were and go as low as we possibly could. And that would mean, well, we don't know what it's gonna mean, you know, it could be...
It's not an automatic, forever, it's not that.
Well, and that, that's where I brought up the possibility of doing the fee instead of the five percent.
Can't find that very well in the code. I thought that existed easier than it does. I've been hunting and it's, uh, we'll still look. I just, that's been tougher to find than I thought it was gonna be.
That was my thought, was the fee would be something that would be easy to tack on for however long it needs to pay off the project, and then when it's done, you give it a fee and... And that was a percentage rate is still...
But either way, it comes out to the same amount of money, it's just a different way of doing it.
And water users are paying it, not just property taxes.
And there was, I mean, I, I felt when we, the, those of us who are here, there was a real commitment to saying, yes, we need to go back and look at that and see.
I watched the first half of that meeting, and I didn't see the second, so that's where I kinda cut off.
It looked a lot like the first half.
Yeah, I'm sure it did. That's probably why I cut off on it.
Maybe semantics a little bit, but traditionally, we've seen about a two-and-a-half percent increase just in fixed costs. So really, we're only packing on two-and-a-half percent to cover the water main project.
It's above what would have been asked for normally to continue on, so, but yeah, after it's done, we would take a hard look at what should it be? Is it one, is it zero, is it two, is it, what is it? And so it's not an automatic going forward.
And then, you know, that kind of goes toe-toe with the question of, you know, we're, we're really fighting with our debt, and, you know, we're really tight with maxing out on it and trying to squeeze in as much as we can.
Tight yet, we're gonna get tighter.
I know, well, that's what I'm saying.
But again, we're tight on that eighty percent, we're not tight on the hundred.
Yeah.
Right, and we're not even at eighty percent now, we're sitting at sixty, sixty-two percent right now with the Parkway in there. Bridge would take us to seventy, I think, right in there, depending.
You know, ten years ago, we would have just borrowed for this main, and it wouldn't have affected really anything, because, you know, we were in the thirties or forties, you know, that kind of thing. So as we get higher up in our debt, we have to make these tougher decisions, you know, billing people different and... It just, you know, the close, the more and more we get there, and that's why I would like us to, you know, I know we're trying to do as many projects as we can and keep up with our citizens and do everything that we can, but if we can lower the debt limit at some point somehow, then that makes things like putting in a new water main possible without having to raise fees double than what they would have. So that's, that's just me, and now I'll be quiet.
No, that's...
That was a good point.
Nice, yeah, you're here.
When was that that we were at thirty percent?
Back, like when I started, we were in like thirty...
The upper thirties, probably, yeah. Ten years ago.
It's really jumped up, it's really jumped up fast.
We hit seventy-two, uh, two, three years ago, and then it's come down since. We're probably in the upper fifties, low sixties right now, I'd say. The audit has it in there, it's in the back.
I've been on about five years, and we started out, we were in the thirty to thirty-five to forty range, and now we're, you know, seventy-ish.
Dry run took that up, dry run took that up quite a bit.
Well, we, yeah, we did the dry run, we did, uh, the new, the new Public Works Building, which I know comes out of water and sewer, or water and garbage, I can't remember which one, but it still goes against our debt levy, right?
No.
Uh, not against the levy amount, no, capacity it would, if it's, uh, unless it was a revenue bond itself.
They were revenue bonds.
Oh, yeah, they're revenue bonds, yeah, so...
Just like Greymour Avenue will be a revenue bond, and will not impact...
For the water mains.
The water portion of it will be, that's correct.
But, yeah, I mean, when you say it's a revenue bond, yes, it doesn't impact your taxes, but we charge more in fees to build up enough money in the fund to pay off that loan with the revenues that we make. So we're still, people are still paying for it.
But you have more people paying for it.
As opposed to everybody that pays property taxes, or I guess...
Oh, yeah.
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 It'd be...
Brentwood and Hospital and Wardburg and...
City, county, schools, nonprofits, hospital, a lot of them don't need taxes.
But grand scheme of things, people are still paying, either one way.
Yeah.
One way or another, they're paying for it, correct?
But, yeah, I mean, we did a lot of things there in three years that raised our debt limit quite a bit. And yes, you know, obviously the dry run was a big one, and that was important. And I think we'll see dividends from that, because all of our housing values around that area should go up, and if we can get FEMA to give us those thirty-some lots back, that should help with property, you know, as well, so.
We're hoping.
And people like me, you know, won't have to spend a hundred and fifty dollars a month that goes nowhere, and I could maybe fix up my house a little bit, do something like that, you know.
You mean for flood insurance?
Yeah. I mean, I, I have a small little house, and mine's over like a hundred and twenty dollars a month. People that have big houses, I'm guessing, are two hundred, three hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
I don't know how they afford to live there, so, um, we're talking three, four thousand dollars a year people could have back to reinvest in their homes and... It's a, it's a good thing we did that, but I know it took up a lot of our debt, so, but we'll be kind of...
A mayoral compliment to the council for its past decisions. I don't know if it goes back as far as my compliment into the Rahmathias days, but it all builds and enabled the town to have a quality of life, and CMI buys in, and we're all kind of singing good songs right now. It's just good to have everybody's input. I think that, uh, do you need more?
No, sir, I don't. Unless there's anything else council wants to add, I think I'm okay.
Okay, last thoughts? Motion to adjourn?
We adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no, adjourned.